Buenas tardes, a todos. Normalmente empezamos esto a las 3 de la tarde, pero sé que hay muchos israelíes en la sala que normalmente están tarde. Y personas hispanas también. ¡Oh, Dios mío!
¿Por qué hacemos esto? Es muy asqueroso.
Buenas tardes, a todos. Si todos pueden tomar sus asientos. Ahí está Jerry. Va a llamar a screaming. Hola, a todos. Si pueden, por favor, tomen sus asientos. Tomen sus asientos, por favor. Estamos a punto de empezar. No voy a... No voy a estirar. Es... Es malo estirar dentro. No voy a gavilar. Bien, si todos pueden tomar sus asientos. Mayor, si pueden, también tomen su asiento. Gracias.
Hola.
Bien. Buenas tardes, a todos. Bienvenidos. Son las 3:09 y estoy llamando a esta reunión a orden. Señor fiscal de la ciudad.
Comisionado Joseph.
Presente.
Comisionado Seivisant.
Aquí.
Comisionado Viscara.
Aquí.
Vice María Lama.
Aquí.
Mañana Fechán.
Aquí.
Todos los miembros presentes.
Bien, genial. Gracias.
Bien, tenemos un par de cambios en la agenda. Primero, vamos a hacer un par de temas sin orden y también estamos añadiendo la Proclamación para el Día de la Herencia Hispanic. Así que si tenemos la conciliación de la comisión, podemos avanzar.
Claro.
Bien, gracias. El primer tema que vamos a escuchar es la Proclamación 2D, Proclamación Reconociendo Florida City Week.
Así que esta proclamación reconoce Florida City Week, que tendrá lugar desde el 20 de octubre hasta el 26 de octubre de 2025. El lunes 13 de octubre de 2025, lanzaremos nuestro concurso de escritura para nuestros jóvenes residentes en las clases 6 a 8. Esta iniciativa invita a nuestra juventud a compartir lo que hace especial a su ciudad y proporciona la oportunidad de expresar su orgullo y creatividad. El concurso permanecerá abierto hasta el viernes 24 de octubre de 2025 y los ganadores serán anunciados y reconocidos en el workshop de noviembre. Estamos emocionados de escuchar a nuestros jóvenes residentes y de celebrar sus voces durante Florida City Week. Los folios con detalles adicionales están disponibles en la taberna trasera y también estoy disponible para responder cualquier pregunta. Gracias.
Gracias.
¿Podemos tomar una foto con la proclamación, por favor?
¿Hay algún comentario para la comisión primero?
No.
No, tenía un comentario. Por favor, vámonos.
Noté en el folio que decía que sería como un ensayo de una página. Sí. Pero mi sugerencia para ustedes sería tal vez hacerlo como un conteo de palabras, dada que... No quiero ir ciega con alguien que tiene mucho que decir con una letra de cuatro puntos. Así que tal vez un conteo de palabras sería una mejor forma de framing que una página.
Bien. Gracias.
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 Bien, el siguiente tema es 2C, Proclamación Reconociendo el Día del Cancer de la Esposa de octubre.
Así que ese es mi tema. Tratamos de recordar a todos cada año a través del Día de la Avertencia del Cancer de la Esposa, que es octubre, que afecta a muchas vidas, incluyendo la mía. Mi madre falleció de cáncer de la espalda hace casi 30 años y todos conocemos a alguien que fue afectado por ello. Así que creo que es importante aprender a defenderse por sí mismos, especialmente ahora. Las guías están cambiando, hay mucho movimiento en la red, así que solo animaría a todos a... No sepa temer a defenderse por sí mismo y seguir las guías. Así que leeré la proclamación. Vamos a presentarla a una organización local hoy. Usted puede venir adelante y luego mientras leo y luego usted puede hablar. ¿De acuerdo? Así que leyendo: Mientras que demasiados estadounidenses son afectados por la dolor y dificultad causadas por el cáncer de la espalda, una enfermedad que entre mujeres no es solo una de las cánceres más comunes, sino también una de las principales causas de muertes relacionadas con el cáncer. Mientras que el Día de la Avertencia Nacional del Cáncer de la Esposa de octubre, que es una campaña anual para aumentar la conciencia de esta enfermedad, y mientras hemos visto un aumento en los ratios de mamografía y un declive en la muerte, lo cual es buena noticia, hay más que podemos hacer. El Día de la Avertencia Nacional del Cáncer de la Esposa de la Esposa sigue dedicado a aumentar el conocimiento público sobre la importancia de la detección temprana de diagnóstico y tratamiento del cáncer de la espalda. Y mientras demasiadas mujeres no utilizan mamografía o intervalos regulares, incluso aunque la investigación indica que es el método más disponible de detección para disminuir las tasas de muerte. Y mientras la campaña de conciencia envía varios mensajes clave, más notablemente, la Sociedad Americana del Cáncer continúa aconsejando a las mujeres que obtengan las pruebas mamográficas anuales una vez que lleguen a la edad de 40. Y mientras, según el Instituto Nacional del Cáncer, se estiman 316,950 nuevos casos de cáncer de la espalda que se diagnosticarán en 2025, contando con 15.5% de todos los nuevos casos de cáncer entre mujeres, con aproximadamente 42,170 proyectadas muertes. Y el porcentaje de supervivencia relativo de la cáncer de la espalda es actualmente 91.7%, refiriéndose a la importancia de la detección temprana y la investigación continua. Y mientras, la Fundación Florida del Cáncer de la Esposa está dedicada a terminar el cáncer de la espalda a través de la investigación, la educación, la defensa y el apoyo directo al paciente y juegan un papel vital en fortalecer a las comunidades en todo el estado, tenemos la Fundación Florida del Cáncer de la Esposa presente. Y mientras, la Fundación Florida del Cáncer de la Esposa proporciona recursos críticos, como programas de mamogramas gratuitos, ayudas a pacientes, grantes y campañas de educación pública para mejorar el acceso al cuidado y reducir las desparidades en los resultados del cáncer de la espalda. Y mientras, la ciudad de Sunny Isles Beach está en solidaridad con los sobrevivientes del cáncer de la espalda y sus hermanos, reafirmamos nuestro compromiso para aumentar la conciencia de esta enfermedad y agradecemos a innumerables profesionales, investigadores y cuidadores que dedican sus vidas a luchar por un mundo sin cáncer de la espalda. Por lo tanto, la Comisión de la Ciudad de Sunny Isles Beach Florida designa este Día de octubre 2025 como Día de Avertencia del Cáncer de la Esposa en la ciudad de Sunny Isles Beach. Esa sería nuestra proclamación y si pueden... Están bien invitados.
Gracias mucho. Gracias mucho por invitarme aquí hoy. Soy Carol Margolis y soy la directora regional de la Fundación Florida del Cáncer de la Esposa y realmente aprecio todo lo que has dicho aquí. Es tan importante que todos reconozcan la importancia del mamograma y sabemos que los hombres también tienen cáncer de la espalda. Así que es muy importante conocer su cuerpo y como has dicho, la palabra clave aquí es ser tu propio defensor. También tenemos la placa de licencia que ven en vehículos. Hemos tenido esa placa de licencia durante 23 años, así que si alguna vez quieren apoyar el cáncer de la espalda, por favor, busquen adquirir esa placa de licencia y entonces tienen esa placa, no importa si cambian de carro y no la usan. Todavía la tienen y la pueden usar en cualquier momento. Hemos estado cerca de 33 años, así que muchas gracias por invitarme aquí hoy y este es un día muy especial y estoy muy feliz de estar en la presencia. Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
¿Quieres que me ponga en la fila?
Vamos a ir hacia ti.
Bien. Ustedes están haciendo sus ejercicios.
Gracias, Comisionado Viscara, por patrocinar eso y también quiero agradecer al gerente de la ciudad y al personal que también participan cada mes en la RPD y encerrando el carro. Y sí, realmente aprecio que lo hagan. Bien, siguiente tema.
Necesitamos que este tema se cure ya.
Bien, el siguiente tema que vamos a escuchar es la adición de la Proclamación para el Día de la Herencia Hispanic. Señor Seivisant.
Bien, tenemos aquí a los miembros del Consejo de Asesoría de Asuntos Hispanicos de Miami-Dade County. Así que ustedes pueden venir. Así que hicimos esta proclamación el mes pasado cuando comenzó la celebración del Día de la Herencia Hispanic desde el 15 de septiembre hasta el 15 de octubre. Estamos fuera de fecha hasta ahora, pero vinieron a recibirlo hoy. Así que muchas gracias. Alguien... Bien, tenemos aquí a Griselle, ella es la presidenta del consejo. Ella querría decir algunas palabras, por favor.
Ustedes pueden ir al podium.
Gracias.
Gracias por invitarnos aquí. Soy la directora del Consejo de Asesoría de Asuntos Hispanicos de Miami-Dade County y estos son mis miembros. Anta mayor de la ciudad de Fortaleza.
Parece familiar.
Claudia Cubillas. Y tenemos anta mayor y comisionado de Aventura. Comisionado de Aventura. Y Gladys. Y luego tenemos el Dr. Francesco Duberli, él es psicólogo. Así que somos el Consejo de Asesoría de Asuntos Hispanicos de Miami-Dade County y les agradezco la proclamación. Esperamos trabajar con todas nuestras municipalidades. El consejo se reúne el 3 de tues... El 2 de jueves del mes. Y ahora mismo, cuando el año termina, estamos buscando trabajar con nacionales extranjeros para ayudarlos a establecer sus degrees, gente que son médicos, maestros de otros países, que pueden venir y nosotros podemos ayudarlos a través del proceso de revalidación. También en marzo de... De año próximo, vamos a hacer una conferencia de salud de mujeres porque es Día de las Mujeres. Y así que nuestra próxima reunión es el 23 de octubre en el edificio Steven P. Clark, a las 6:00 p.m. Están bien invitados a venir o enviar sus representantes. Esperamos trabajar con Sunny Isles Beach.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Vamos a ir a tomar una foto con usted.
¿Alguien tiene algún comentario?
Gracias por lo que hace.
La proclamación es...
La proclamación está llegando ahora mismo. Angel. Sí, la tiene Angel. Angel, sí, no, no, ella tiene ahí.
Necesito hacer una clarificación. También quiero aclarar y informar que el anta comisionado de Aventura Gladys, ella es representante de Sunny Isles, designada por la comisionada de la ciudad Miki Steinberg. Gracias.
Bien.
Bien. El siguiente es 2B, la proclamación presentada a Zippy Holland.
Bien. Así que quiero agradecer a todos los que están aquí por las muchas proclamaciones que tenemos hoy. Normalmente no tenemos tantas personas, así que es muy, muy apreciado que ustedes todos vinieron, algunos de ustedes de muy lejos. Quiero reconocer al comisionado Steinberg que acaba de venir. Hola. Primero leeré la carta y luego te daré un tiempo, una oportunidad para decir algunas palabras. Oh, Phyllis está escondida allá atrás. Hola, comisionada de Norte Miami Beach. ¿Cómo estás? Esto es muy emocional y solo quiero decir que Zippy es residente a largo plazo de Sunny Isles Beach y esto iba a ser presentado a ella, creo, el mes pasado o tal vez incluso el mes anterior, pero el calendario lo impedió. Y creo que dado el estado de lo que está pasando en el mundo ahora mismo y cuánto estamos en un lugar más positivo, esto realmente resonará de una manera muy diferente. Así que voy a leer esta carta y luego dejar que la comisión diga algunas palabras si quisiera. En nombre de la Comisión de la Ciudad de Sunny Isles Beach, es un honor y un privilegio extenderle nuestra mayor admiración y respeto por una vida vivida con coraje, propósito inconfundible y generosidad extraordinaria. Su historia no es solo una historia, sino un testimonio vivo de la resistencia del espíritu humano. Nacido en la oscuridad inescuelable de un campamento de trabajo en Siberia durante el Holocausto, emergiste no solo como un sobreviviente, sino también como una fuerza radiante para el bien en un mundo que a menudo olvida las lecciones del pasado. Desde ese inmenso principio, has dibujado un camino definido por compasión, educación y un profundo compromiso con los demás. Tu viaje de desesperación a la esperanza no es nada menos que milagroso y continúa sirviendo como inspiración para generaciones jóvenes y viejas. En las salas de clases, auditorios y instalaciones militares en todo este país, su voz ha hecho testigo no solo de las horrores de la historia, sino también del poder de la curación. Su mensaje, fundado en la dignidad y el amor, transcurre el tiempo y el lugar. Su historia es un recordatorio de la inavaindable responsabilidad que todos compartimos de recordar, de hablar y de levantar. A través de sus lecciones y su escritura, han ayudado a miles de personas a entender la importancia de la empatía y la conciencia histórica. Su memoir, "Mi caja de regalos", va más allá de contar su historia personal. Sirve como un recordatorio poderoso del pasado y un llamado a construir un futuro más compasivo. Su impacto se extiende mucho más allá de sus palabras. A través de sus ongoing esfuerzos filosóficos, como apoyar a niños con necesidades especiales, familias en circunstancias difíciles, jóvenes soldados, pacientes de cáncer, hospitales y varias organizaciones de la comunidad, han demostrado un profundo compromiso con el servicio y la compasión. Su generosidad ha hecho una diferencia significativa en la vida de muchos, ofreciendo apoyo y dignidad a aquellos que lo necesitan más. Como residente orgulloso de Sunny Isles Beach durante las últimas dos décadas, sus contribuciones en los últimos 20 años han tenido un impacto duradero y positivo en la comunidad. Su apoyo ha sido guiado no solo por un deseo de reconocimiento, sino también por un verdadero sentido de responsabilidad y cuidado, refiriéndose a un nivel de compromiso que deja un legado significativo. Señora Holland, su vida es un ejemplo poderoso de cómo la adversidad personal puede transformarse en propósito. Su compromiso con compartir su historia y servir a otros refleja los valores que fortalecen nuestra sociedad: la resistencia, la justicia, la humildad y la esperanza. En reconocer sus contribuciones, también reafirmamos la importancia de estos ideales en nuestras comunidades. Es con gran orgullo y reverencia que la ciudad de Sunny Isles Beach reconoce a usted por sus extraordinarias contribuciones. También quiero agregar que Drori me había acercado hace unos meses y me había pedido esto. Y las proclamaciones son patrocinadas por la comisión, pero alguien podría solicitarlo de cualquiera de nosotros. Y sabía que eras residente aquí y he visto que estabas en tantos eventos, pero hasta que compartió su historia conmigo no sabía todas las cosas impactantes que hiciste. Y estamos tan bendecidos de tenerlo aquí porque, como sabemos, los sobrevivientes del Holocausto son muy pocos en este momento, pero no estás siendo reconocido solo por eso. Estás siendo reconocido por la luz positiva que has traído a esta comunidad. Y en nombre de esta comisión, quiero agradecerle. Y si ustedes quieren decir algunas palabras, por favor.
Primero de todo... Generalmente no estoy perdida de palabras, pero hoy estoy tan honrado y no puedo decirles lo que significa para mí estar todavía aquí y hablar sobre lo que está pasando en el mundo y en Israel, por supuesto, y cuán importante es que hablamos y no nos quedamos quietos. Nos levantamos y decimos "suficiente", porque la gente piensa que es solo en Israel o otros países. Está aquí y no vamos a tener otra vida. No vamos a tener World War III. Tenemos que levantarnos y decir "suficiente, suficiente, suficiente con el mal, suficiente con el odio". ¿Por qué? ¿Por qué no podemos vivir en paz? Así que mi mensaje, mis chicas están aquí, mi hija Sharon, Adina, todos mis amigos están aquí. Mi mensaje es muy simple. Levantense por la crueldad, por el odio, por todo lo malo en este mundo, porque dicen que requiere un pueblo. requiere que todos nos levantemos y decamos "suficiente". Así que realmente estoy demasiado emocionada para hablar, pero quiero agradecerles mucho porque me di cuenta... Sabes, no haces cosas para devolver algo. Siempre lo hago, mis hijos lo saben. Lo hago porque me da un poco más de la felicidad sobre lo que me ha pasado. Y tengo que decir una cosa sobre... Tengo que decir de dónde vengo. Mis padres eran increíbles personas. Perdimos todo. Soy un niño único. No tengo hermanos ni hermanas, ni hermanos. Algunos hermanos en Israel. Y mi padre, en paz, eso es lo que vivo. Digo a mis hijos y a mis grandes hijos. Esta es una línea que me dijo. Era muy inteligente por haber nacido en los años 20. Me dijo así: "Tienes que tocar a alguien cuando estás vivo, porque si no, es como si escribieras tu nombre en el arena y viene el viento y lo arrasa". Pero si tocas a una persona en tu vida, va a ser escrito en cemento y siempre vas a estar cerca. Así que gracias por este honor. Gracias por entender lo que todos estamos haciendo aquí y por qué estamos aquí y deberíamos continuar siendo aquí. Y muchas gracias. Gracias.
Gracias. Solo quería dar una oportunidad rápida si alguien de la comisión quería decir algunas palabras antes de bajar.
Sí, claro.
Por favor, vámonos.
Así que, Zippy, me gustaría tomar un minuto para... Para ser tan feliz, sí, de que estés reconocido por la ciudad y por todo lo que has hecho por otros sobrevivientes del Holocausto y para mostrar la importancia de la recordación del Holocausto, porque hay muchas personas más jóvenes estos días que simplemente... Sus mentes han sido tomadas por Internet y simplemente no entienden la brevedad de ello. Pero les agradezco. Yo misma perdí a varios familiares en Auschwitz, así que sé el dolor.
Gracias. ¿Alguien más? Bien, si puedo, por favor, invitar al comisionado Steinberg... Está escondida. Ahí está. Para venir a tomar una foto también, a menos que quieras decir algunas palabras. No.
Ah, no falta nada. Todavía tenemos la "Key to the City", ¿verdad? Todavía tenemos la "Key to the City".
También quiero agregar que la representante Fabian Basabi quería enviar su regalo. No podía estar aquí porque está en Tallahassee.
Bien, así que la presentación final que tenemos es 2A, que es la "Key to the City", presentada al mayor Elba Starinski como antiguo consulado general de Israel en Miami.
Es mi placer presentar esto, pero nuevamente tengo que decir que el calendario no nos permitió presentarlo a ustedes el mes pasado y realmente es apropiado hacerlo ahora, considerando todo el trabajo que han puesto en esta comunidad. En realidad, encontré una antigua imagen porque aparentemente hay muchas imágenes de... We, actually, I found an old picture, because apparently there's a lot of pictures of you from 2021 when we first met, and I want to read this, and then I'm going to ask you to come up just to say a few words, please. So, ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests, it is with immense pride and honor that I, as the mayor of Sunny Isles Beach, sit before you today to present the very first Key to the City in our community's history to an extraordinary individual, the former council general of Israel to Miami, Mayor Elbaz Starinsky, who took me this long to be able to pronounce your name. This moment carries special significance as it marks the inaugural presentation of this prestigious honor, symbolizing the profound impact of your contributions. Your tenure as council general has been marked by unwavering dedication fostering strong ties between our community and Israel. Your leadership has built bridges of understanding, collaboration, and friendship that has enriched Sunny Isles Beach. Through your tireless efforts, you have promoted cultural exchange, economic partnerships, and a shared commitment to peace and prosperity. This Key to the City, our first ever, is a symbol of our gratitude and admiration for your remarkable contributions. It represents the deep respect and appreciation we as a city and as a city commission hold for you and the enduring bond between Sunny Isles Beach and the people you have so admirably represented. On behalf of our entire city commission, I am honored to present you with the inaugural Key to the City of Sunny Isles Beach. May this key remind you that you are always welcome and you always have a home here, and may our friendship continue to flourish for years to come.
I didn't think I would be so emotional, but I am. Thank you for making me dress up for the first time in the past two months, actually dress up and iron my shirt and all that, and get out of the kitchen, being that I'm now a full-time home dad. I keep cutting myself, where's my security when I did them? But really, this is a tremendous honor for me. And from the bottom of my heart, I'm so grateful for you as elected official, but for this wonderful community over here behind me and around us all, for really making this place a role model and a safe place for Jews, to be Jews, and to be able to express our faith and to be able to practice our rituals, and to be able to really represent my amazing, beautiful, prosperous, proud country and people in a place that accepts and respects all that. And I don't think there is any place in the world where Jews and Israelis, unfortunately, I would say that, can be as proud and as happy and as safe as here in South Florida. And you as elected officials, all the people behind me as activists, as community leaders, have a huge role. And I would just want to really echo what CP, my friend and mentor, had said. It takes all of us to be able to change or to make our society and our community a better place, and we all need to speak up. And, you know, seeing now the hostages coming back home, the live hostages coming back home, and knowing that nobody is now enduring suffering in Gaza in the hands of these monsters. You all had a role. You had all a role and an impact on making that happen. And of course, we will not rest until everybody are, even the deceased ones, are brought to proper burial and closure, but we all had and still have a role in making this world and our community a better place. So, thank you very much. I will use it when I cross from Avantura on the Lehman Causeway or 163rd. And from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much.
Thank you. I just want to give the Commission, anybody wants to say a few words? No? Jerry?
I would just, no, 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 thank you. No, it's my pleasure to co-sponsor the giving of this key. And we, in Sunny Isles, we take a lot of pride in our respect and our honor for Israel. We all have relatives there, a lot of us, or some of us. And we have our, Israel, we always have Israel's back in Sunny Isles.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, this is the first time we're doing this, and so we're actually, where's the city clerk? Oh, there he is, all right. So, we have other items on the agenda. I would love everyone to stay, but I'm going to give everyone a few minutes if you wanted to go, but you're welcome to stay to hear our items. It's going to take a couple of minutes.
Funny, she's funny.
Good luck on your meeting, you look very cute.
Whatever.
Are they all leaving? I shouldn't have said anything. We always have dates.
They're waiting for what? Which one?
Does tennis work?
Never worked. Are you sure it's on schedule? They're building it.
Are you waiting for basketball or tennis?
The same. Toba, okay. I live in Poensiana. I live in Poensiana, across the street from you. Poensiana Island, yes, yes, yes.
You're going to love it. Yeah, it's for residents, yes. It's on schedule, trust me.
See, just want to finish the construction like us.
So the, with Mayor, we have a discussion now, and it moves to this evening?
No. Well, no, because we have to, we have to bring back whatever designs he's given us, if that's what the Commission decides.
Well, he's showing the designs today.
Yeah, that's what the Commission decides. They can come back as an add-on.
And I'll propose it to have it on this evening.
When it comes up, I'm going to let them know, I'm going to let the mayor know that you're right.
Yes, thanks.
So then you can kind of give the overview.
Okay.
And then me or Susan can pick up on it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to proceed to the next item. For those in the audience, if you could just please take your conversations outside. Hey, Mauricio?
Okay, we are now into the discussion items. 3A is a discussion regarding remote voting at Commission meetings.
Commissioner Riscara?
Oh, hello. All right, so this is not a new concept. We discussed it back in July. And so I had to wait three months to be able to bring it back at the July meeting, and, you know, we had the benefit of the attorney's memo, so that's why I redistributed it to you guys now, if you wanted to refresh your memories, but it's, so I'm not telling you anything new, but I did want us, having had to live the consequences of our decisions, I wanted to bring it back to the table to see if we might reconsider what the Vice Mayor's position was back in July, which is to look into the allowing remote voting, but limiting it, because clearly, the way that it is, I think I do agree with the analysis that the city attorney provided us, that our code currently is not clear, and that for years, I guess, we were doing it wrong, and it requires correcting. We saw since then, somebody being sick and not being able to be here, and then things getting derailed, a family member being sick and things being derailed. I was on a conference, and, well, I had planned it, thinking I could attend, and then in between, it got decided that I couldn't. So, I mean, we can attend, but we can't vote, right? Even we can participate. But, so, I wanted us to reconsider it at the budget meeting, you know, traffic, and I was like, late, but if I could have participated by phone, we could have avoided all that stuff. I don't think we, if we go this way, that we just leave it as is, because it does leave the opportunity to never show up and just be on the phone all the time, right? So that's not an unacceptable outcome. So I think, based on this memo, it's pretty clear, you need at least three elected officials physically present in order to have a quorum, and the presiding officer needs to be physically present. So if the mayor can't be here, maybe, you know, if you're on the phone, you can still vote, but the Vice Mayor would have to run the meeting, right? And yes, we should have limits as to how many times, because how am I supposed to know that there's, that Turnpike is going to turn into one lane, right? Like, so, and I could have still done something. So those are, those will be my recommendations to reconsider it. We can amend our, make the amendments to our code to make this possible. I think we need to get with the times. I hope that we have learned our lesson. And it's very possible, other cities do it, and like I said in the July meeting, the courts, I mean, we, the courts get business done, and nobody is sharing the same space. I'm in my office, the clients are in their homes, the judge is in chambers, and it still happens. And there's nothing, if we can, if we can run the judicial system that way, why can't we occasionally vote that way also? It may require some technology, maybe not just by phone. We can have the Zoom, again, like using the court as my example, and if we need to recuse ourselves, you know, Zoom allows you to put people in like a room, I don't know if you guys have experienced that, like, you can be put in a separate room, so you can be there by yourself, it's a virtual room, and then when the item is over, then the clerk, you know, the city clerk could let that person back in. So we have the technology, it's very possible, we just have to have the will for it. In the past, we had, I remember, maybe Bud was still mayor, like there was, maybe once or twice, there was an item that was sensitive, and we said, you know what, somebody was absent, we're like, we should probably, this should be, this should be the whole Commission, like, we should have the whole Commission weigh in on this, and we deferred it. But that's, that doesn't always happen. Now, because we're so splintered, when somebody is absent, or, you know, we're not able to vote, then there's a, it becomes very imbalanced. So I think we need to keep, make the decisions to make us as balanced as possible, as often as possible. And that would be my, I mean, it's not a new item, guys, so that's, those are my thoughts.
Okay. Who would like to chime in? Go ahead, Commissioner.
I will chime in. So, we're considering this not only for this sitting Commission here, but for future Commissions. So we don't know in the future who would be sitting here, what their ideas might be as far as taking advantage of certain conditions, and I'd just like... And I'd just like, you know, for that to be considered as well. That it, it's not only, uh, the responsible people that are sitting at this commission, but we have to consider for the city's, uh, purposes, uh, future commissions.
May I respond?
Yes.
So, I mean, everything we do up here is for future commissions, right? Absolutely every decision we make is gonna have a, a subsequent, uh, impact afterwards. So, um, so I've thought about that, because you said that at the last meeting, that this, this would impact others. And that's why I think it's important to put the limit on it. Even if we, if we, if we say, okay, I'll, I think it should be two. But even if we allow one, if just allowing, because we've seen it. We've already experienced it. I think every single month, uh, we've experienced something where something came up. And I was personally in the position. I was prepared. I could have done it, um, but I wasn't allowed to. And, um, but I do see how the, the, that we have the, the way that it is, it opens it up for abuse. We don't want commissioners to just show up here, uh, I mean, get elected and then, like, be on vacation all the time. And, oh, sorry, I couldn't make it, and then, you know, we don't want that. But we can control that. And we have no idea who, that's why, the things that we do have to be, uh, crafted that are in a way that's generally applicable and that makes sense. And like, we don't know who's gonna be our client in court. The judges don't know who's gonna show up. It does, we, you can't think about the individuals. You have to, you just have to have a system that works. And you have to know how to address the things that are coming. And so that's why I was thinking about when you have to recuse yourself, because that's an item, something that was brought up here, where you have to physically remove yourself. We can do that if we have Zoom. And if we don't do it, if we, let's say, just keep it telephonic, which I think is a little basic, but let's say we decide that, well, then we have to create a policy around that, where I guess Mauricio would hang up on the person, and then they would call back in. I mean, we, we can figure it out. This is very figure-out-able. And, um, so anyway, that's, that's my answer to you.
Vice Mayor, you want to?
Yeah, I, I think the way you do it is that you limit it to two per year, right? Uh, where each commissioner and the, and the mayor will get two times per year to vote remotely, for whatever reason. And then you limit it that way, because if you do have someone whose intent it is to abuse the system, they're limited to two occasions. That's it. So, I think that from a technological standpoint, we can make it work, and I think it makes perfect sense. I mean, we've had, uh, some instances where, where I have been sick, or somebody else has been sick, and I know that they are fully aware, they are fully informed of the issue, and for them to be prevented from, from voting, I don't think it's right, or I don't think it's fair. And obviously, I understand your point of people that, you know, would wanna be absent all the time, right? But that's why you have limits to it.
And I would add this, like, if you want to, it's an item, it's important that, for you to be here, and maybe you are sick, or somebody in your family is sick, then what are we saying? Come over and get us all sick. That's, that's not responsible either, right?
Commissioner Stusson, did you wanna? No comments? You don't care either way?
Yeah, I, I say before, uh, I don't agree with voting remote.
Okay. So I, I, I wanna just bring up some, some questions, or rather, comments, because, like you said, we talked about this a few months ago, and I think we actually talked about it even before then, in, in various conversations somehow. This is not, this is not the second time I feel like we're talking about this. So, you know, I was one of those people when my mother was in the emergency room, and so I'm trying to imagine how I would have possibly participated. I couldn't have, because even when I was on the phone, I had to keep, you know, going in and out, because you have the bells and the whistles where I was. And even, I wouldn't be, be able to actually participate. You know, I, my vote would be there, but am I really part of the conversation? You can't really hear everyone. And I think that, you know, and I'm split on this, by the way. I haven't really made up my mind. Because, you know, the people that come, and there are certain people that are in the audience, that come every single month and have never missed a meeting, um, looking at you, David. And, uh, and so I understand that, that there are circumstances, but because of those circumstances, we can miss, um, what is it, six? Remind me, please, Mauricio?
Um, for the commission, um, if I remember correctly, it's up to three per year. And for the mayor, it's less. I'd, I'd have to look.
I thought it was like, three in, in a row. But in any case, if you can look that up.
It's in the memo. It's in the memo.
The, you know, the other part is, is if we look at, you know, basing it on, on two. So at, we could potentially have every single month, not a full commission sitting up here. And, uh, and while there aren't always people that are in the audience, people are watching on TV, and, you know, we were elected to be here. And I get your analogy to, to the courts. I think that's a little bit different. And, you know, the judge is in chambers. Uh, the judge is in someplace else. So I think that it's important for, for us to be here as, as well. I don't think that it's a very huge commitment. But, but, on the other hand, when there are very important votes, and certain votes that cannot wait, because we have a responsibility, a legal responsibility to vote on that day, it is a challenge. So, Mauricio, did you pull that up?
Pull that up, one second, I'm here.
So, you know, what, and I want it to be more of a conversation. So, what, what would you say, you know, if, let's say, you're in, when you were in traffic? I wouldn't wanna be trying to drive and trying to pay attention at the same time, and, you know, are we actually working for, God forbid, something happens, and you get into a car accident, Mr. City Attorney? What is that considered when you are participating in a commission meeting? Are you at work for the purposes of insurance, or the liability? Do you understand what I'm asking?
Uh, from a work brings comp point of view.
Right.
Potentially. I mean, it, it opens up a door to a few things, and that's one of the other things we'd have to consider, because what's considered an absence is one is not considered an absence, because under Florida law, if you're deemed present, you have to vote.
Right.
So if a remote participation is gonna be deemed an absence, then you can't vote. If it's not, if you're gonna be deemed as present, then it can't count against you for your charter responsibilities of you having to be here a certain amount of times throughout the year. So there's some conflict there within that regard, because, um, again, if you're not present for one purpose, you can't vote for the other and be present for that. So you have to make those consistent. And that's part of the issue. Then there's the quasi-judicial issue, which I would definitely recommend against any remote participation in that regard, um, for quasi-judicial, because you're gonna get into due process issues. The other thing too, is if you do go in that manner, the technology has to be there. There has to be full interaction, full visibility. So I would not recommend you do a meeting through a car, because especially, let's say, quasi-judicial, evidence is being shown on the screen, you have to be looking at the screen, things of that. So things can come up that, there's limitations. Unfortunately, unlike the court, you're subject to two eighty-six, chapter two eighty-six, which you have to be a, a bit more open to the public than the judiciary has to. So I'm not saying.
But you're, you're talking about quasi-judicial, right? I, I don't, I don't think that we should vote remotely on quasi-judicial stuff.
But, but wait, wait, wait. Commissioner Riscara, let, let the attorney finish.
But that's where we're gonna need to figure out, because either, either you're here or you're not here. So if, if you're on the phone, and it couldn't be just phone, it would have to be more than phone. But if you're participating in voting, you're present. So you're gonna have to be present for charter purposes in that regard, with regards to your allotment of absences throughout the year. If you don't, so let's say you set a limitation, the problem is that then if you're paying by phone, as you were before, now you're gonna say, well, now I'm not present for that purpose. So I'm present for one purpose on the phone, but I'm not present for the other.
I don't understand what you're saying.
For different items on the agenda, you mean?
Well, the problem is that, under Florida law, if you're present, if you're here at the meeting, you have to vote.
Okay.
So you can't, if you set a limitation for just two, but the third and fourth time, I'm gonna be absent, I'm not gonna vote, but I'm gonna be here on the phone, then you're required to vote. So if, if I exempt you, if you're allowed to vote twice remotely, and every time you appear remotely, then you'd be, you'd have to vote. Because under Florida law, if you're deemed present for purposes of the charter, you're gonna be required to vote. So there may be ways around it, I haven't done all the permutations, but you're gonna, we're gonna have to reconcile the absences, because right now, correct me if I'm wrong, City Clerk, but if someone appears remotely, they're deemed absent, correct?
Uh, yes, because they're not physically present.
Correct. So, for your allotment of absences under your charter, even if you appear remotely, you listen and you speak and whatever else, you're deemed absent.
Right. And, and so, that's, that's also my point, if, you know, to what you were saying, you have to be available. You know, if you're in an emergency room, you're not gonna be on camera. If you're driving, you can't be on camera. And so you're really just kind of there in order to vote, meaning that you've already decided your vote, and that's not the way that it should be. We should be present and, and hear public comment, we should hear what our colleagues are saying, um, because there's no way that you can actually participate in any meaningful way over the phone. I mean, all of us, I think, uh, with, maybe, maybe not all of us, but you, you can't hear over the phone. It goes in and out.
That's a little separate, that, that's, that's an issue, that what I'm trying to focus on though, is if you are deemed here, so right now, the way we have it, if you're on the phone and participating, you're absent. But if we change that to you're allowed to vote, you can't be absent for one purpose and be present for.
So what you're saying is that you can be, you will only be able to participate remotely two times, whether you call that, uh, absent or not?
What I'm saying is, right now, if you're not physically here, you're absent.
Right, I understand.
So if you're not physically here, you're deemed absent. So an absent person can't vote.
Right.
It's inconsistent, right?
Right.
You can't vote if you're not here.
So I, I'm following you up to that point.
You're deemed absent. So on the record, when you're on a resolution that says I voted, you can't be absent and vote, and that's inconsistent. You can't, you can't not be here.
I understand, I, I.
I think what he's saying is that any remote presence would then be considered present. That's what he's saying, so that you couldn't, you couldn't just limit it to two, so that anytime you are on the phone remotely, we would, the, the definition of present would change to any remote presence.
So if you're, if you're present.
Isn't that part of the amendments that we're allowed to make? I mean, we can define these terms, right?
The problem is, is under Florida law, under Florida statute, I don't have the statute in front of me, but if you are deemed present, you are required to vote.
Understood.
So let's say that we allow now, that when you're here remotely, you are present for purposes of the charter. Anytime that you're going to appear remotely, you're gonna be deemed present for purposes of the charter, which means under Florida law, you have to vote.
So.
So you couldn't limit it.
Are you saying that therefore we cannot say we can only do two?
That's, that's.
That's what you're saying? Okay. So.
Or if you do that, again, it would, you just couldn't, then a person, unless, if you've done your, and again, we'd have to.
You do your two, and then when you have your third, you don't get to vote. I mean.
It's not, no, you can't even be present.
Fine.
You can't even be on the phone.
We don't hook you up.
You can't even be on Zoom.
I mean, the intention, Alan, and, and it's, it's not to encourage absence. It's to, it's to accommodate things that happen. And, and, and by the way, yeah, the driving, um, I mean, I was driving, because I was trying to get here, but it happens in court too, like, people are like, they, they, they show up in court, have you seen that video where the guy is showing up to court for a suspended license, and he's driving?
Yes.
And, and he lost.
Yeah.
So obviously, at that point, you have to use your judgment. You pull over, you're not driving, you're not doing that. If you're in an emergency room, that's one where you're just absent, right? You're, I mean, so, but I'm trying to create some, some flexibility to be used responsibly, because we may need it. You know, you may not be in an emergency room. You might be, uh, you're in traffic, or you can pull over, and, and, you know, if, if you're on your way, you're prepared, you already know what you're doing. It's not like you have your, your, your mind made up, you listen and, and you've prepared. The phone is hard. I mean, I'm, when I'm, this conversation is not about, can we please vote by phone? Because it's hard. I mean, I, I've been on it a few times, and you can't always hear all the comments, and it's difficult. I mean, if we're gonna do this, I would take at least the direction to explore what it would look like, because of course it's possible. Other, other cities do it. I know their charter may be different. You told us in your memo that, that we, it would require amending and reconciling the documents. So what, what would that look like? I mean, that's my question, and.
And again, don't mistake my, my cautionary notes to be a no, or anything like that. As I stated in my memo, there is no express consideration of remote voting within your charter or your code. So it's not expressly dealt with. I'm not saying it's impossible, but things, we'd have to figure things out to facilitate it, and make sure we can reconcile with the charter. Obviously, we can't change the charter, just the, the way we changed the ordinances. But we'd have to figure out a way to make it work, uh, based on your direction as to what you want. So we're in compliance with Florida state law, and then also staving off any challenges we may get, either from the community, from a participation standpoint. That's the other issue with just the phone. It's not just the inability to hear and difficulty. But folks that come to the meeting have a right to face you all. They need to see your face, your facial expressions, you know, if you're rolling your eyes, they, they deserve to see that, you know? Those types of things, it's that interaction that, that chapter two eighty-six tries to engage in. So, and traditionally, that's the case, and I know the, you know, futures come up, and with the technology, it's possible. And yes, some cities do do it. I haven't looked at each particular one and their particular charters, how they reconcile it, everybody's charter is different. But again, not impossible, it's just we'd have to work through all those details.
So, that's, that's a purpose of my item, is if we could seriously consider it, we can still shoot it down later, but I'd like to know what that looks like, um, because I, I, I think we're behind the times. And I think, um, it, it would help more than, um, not.
Yeah, my, my, my biggest reservation is, is to the city attorney's point, is the, the public having access to looking at us and, and engaging in that way. Because it, it makes a difference when people, especially when people come to speak, as, as we all know, it takes a lot to get in front of that podium. And, uh, they deserve to, to be looking at us face to face.
They could put us, for example, like where, where we are on the screens up there, like depending on how we set it up.
No, I, I.
They could see us remotely, we could show up on the screen, and everybody could, probably better than us sitting up here.
Yeah, no, I, I, I get it. I, I get what you mean, but it's just very different. It's very different sitting here, um, you know, everyone being cold at the same time. You know, this is, you're experiencing the, this together. It makes a difference, I, I, I think. So I'm, I'm just, I'm not there to, to, to be ready to, to consider it. But Vice Mayor, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, so I, I think some of the apprehensions that we have about not seeing us, I mean, through technology, I think we could solve that. And then again, that's why we limit it to two times per, per year. And that way, you know, if it, we're really sick, and we really would like to vote, and we're up to, you know, um, up to par with the information and everything related to any of the items and the agenda, I think it's only fair that we could vote. Now, I would like to explore, you know, how other cities do it, other municipalities do it, and, uh, see how that reconciles with, with Florida statute.
Did you wanna say something, Commissioner Stusson?
No, I'm ready to vote.
We're not voting.
We're not voting, but.
This is just a conversation.
Either we give direction or we don't, to explore it.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not supportive of, of exploring it further at this time. I'm, I'm pretty, for, for the major reason of, of people not being able to look at us and be in the same room, but also because I think every single instance where, uh, someone has not been able to be here, they probably wouldn't, it wouldn't help, um, they would not be allowed to be there, to be here in any other way. So if you're sick, for instance, being on Zoom, when you're so sick that you can't be here, I don't think that you're actually participating when you're that ill. And, and I know you said about the pulling over, um, but again, it's, uh.
It's not ideal, but it also, it's the job, right? Like, we signed up for the job, we got elected to do the job.
Exactly.
Life happens. Look, we, we're here. We don't have an absentee issue here.
Right.
And I think in the history of the city, we haven't had an absentee issue, with the exception of, of Commissioner Aelian, who had a really bad accident, and, um, you know, that's a whole other chapter. But I, I don't. But I, I don't know. I just think it's, it's, um, I mean, whatever, I already, I already told you what I think.
Just want to clarify, I want to get clarification so we can, you are against it?
Yes, I'm against it.
Okay, so, uh.
The thing is, as it is, the changes that happened during this administration has taken so much transparency of this process. I mean, now the people come and we can't even talk to them. People ask questions and they, they are here during the whole meeting and they ask questions of us. When we are here present, we can't even answer them back. Now the directors of the other departments are not coming to the meetings as well. So the interaction between the residents, the commission and the staff is always less. So we are less transparent. We are not giving access to our residents, to us, if we are not even here during the commission meeting. So it's the less, the least that we can do. So clearly, uh, I agree, life happens. I have children also. So, and we get sick, kids get sick, et cetera. So it's not ideal, but it's what we have. And, and if we committed, uh, to represent the people, we should be here. And if we are not, okay, bad luck. Then we don't get to, to, um, to vote on the issues, even though they might be important for us. So for example, I know now that I won't be for the next meeting, the one in November, because I'm going to be at the National League Series in Utah. So I know I won't be here in November. I don't know what's going to be the agenda for November. Maybe something that's really important for me is going to be in the agenda. And I will send the, the comment through the city manager or the city clerk to request to defer that item because it's so dear for me, it's something important for me. Again, I'm talking hypothetically because I don't know what's going to be in the agenda in November, of course. So, uh, and you might, you guys might decide, well, you know what? We honor that request of the commissioner because she will be, want to talk about that item. Uh, and that depends on how we function as a body. So if it's something that is important for you and sadly you're sick or something happened in life and you do that request, we, we should consider honoring that. You really want to be able to speak into that item and we should defer the item, you know? So there are ways that if it's something important for you, you can still be part of it. And of course, it depends on the dynamic in the commission, clearly. But my point is that, like I said, as it is, we are limiting the access of staff and city officials to the people, to the public. Less transparency by the second. So this cannot support.
All right. Well, I just, I want, I wanted to add before, and I'll let you close on yours. I, I, I don't agree that this is about transparency. I think that we are very transparent and we have, um, people have access to us whenever they, they want it. I think this is more about.
Not openly, not here in this forum. You're not privately, by closed doors.
Every single resident can come and speak at, at any moment.
Can we answer them back?
Can you, what?
Can we answer them when they ask questions?
No, we follow Robert's rules.
No, your rules, your rules. You change the rules.
Commissioner, Commissioner. Robert's rules as per our, our charter.
Actually, we changed to Robert's. We weren't even Robert's before.
Yes, we were Mason's rules, which is more strict. So Commissioner Biscara, I, I want you to sort of, I know we're not voting, but if you want to just say a few more words, because I want to make sure that it's very clear why you're asking for this. That it's not about not being.
We all know why I'm asking. But okay, uh, the, um, I think the participation, actually, the remote participation actually addresses that concern of, of having, doing the job and allowing more avenues for that. Rather than, you know, too bad. Right? I don't think that's the, the most proactive approach, but okay.
But I don't know what you're asking, by the way.
Remote voting. So with real technology, not the phone. I'm not asking for the phone.
Okay, okay, no, because I really, you said, we all know, but I don't know.
No, the, what I, no, I'm, I'm, I'm just echoing the same thing I said back in July and what the Vice Mayor has said. I don't, I really don't see the harm and in creating a little bit of flexibility when life happens as opposed to telling us, you know, like, who were elected to represent in, in telling the people, sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't do it because life. Right?
Mr. City Attorney, I have a question. How, um, how difficult would it be for you to, to put together a memo to just give us a sense of what surrounding municipalities are doing that are very, that are like us? And, and actual recommendation from you?
I, I mean, I know of some that have raised the issue and have rejected it. It would take, I would need staff time from the city manager because I can't do that on myself. We have a lot of jurisdictions.
Well, I don't mean like an, an actual, you know, full-blown report on every single city, but just.
Not every single city, but general, because it's hit or miss. I mean, I, I know, I don't know, Commissioner Biscara, which ones you're referring to that do allow it. And I don't know, because it's not just a matter of allowing it, but it's a matter of looking as to what constraints they may have.
My reference was, because I, I, when I was at the, I was at the National League back in July. And so I was speaking to people from everywhere. So I understand Florida may, you know, obviously may have different, a different, um, situation. But, so I, I can't, I don't remember.
Commissioner Biscara, would you be open to, to sitting with the manager and, and the attorney and sort of putting together a more comprehensive list, list of what others are doing so that we can get a better understanding of what exactly you, you mean? Because I really thought that when I saw this item, that it was more about the phone. So I'm, I'm open to, to hearing more about this. Let's just say that.
Thank you. The, the phone, I mean, if that's where we're at, okay, but I mean, we could do so much better.
Yeah, no, no, that's why I'm against the phone, absolutely.
And also, um, you can ask an opinion from ethics. You know, ethics here in Miami de Claudio, even in Florida. Because I just took my ethics, um, training two days ago. And we have representative from different, you know, agencies. And somebody from a municipality actually asked about voting when they are not present. And it was like a very short conversation. They basically said, um, if you're not present, you're not there. If you're not there, you can not vote. You know, I mean, and nobody even questioned it. Like, I wish you would be there because then you will have that kind of conversation with them. And also when you do your ethics, unless you did it already, uh, for the, for the year, you can raise those questions. But we can always have a source of asking for an opinion from the Miami, Miami de County Ethics Commission, or the one in Tallahassee. Uh, maybe they can give us more information. But the people that were there when we were doing the training, it was super simple. Like I said, it was not controversial. You need to be there in order to vote, so.
Ironically, I'll be doing my ethics remotely. F I R.
So, um, Alan, do you, do you have enough information?
I'll meet with the city manager and I'll try to see if we can give you some more details.
Okay.
I'll take it.
Next item.
Next item is 3B, discussion regarding art donation for lifeguard towers.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this item was initiated by Commissioner Joseph, so I'd like to ask him to.
Okay, Commissioner.
Thank you. Yes. So the city, we, well, we have five new lifeguard stations. And they're in white, uh, very nondescript. And the city put out, um, a few designs, which asking residents for their opinion. But I took it upon myself, not liking those designs myself and thinking that they weren't representative of the city, to contact my friend Lucas Vidal and Romero Brito. And they were good enough to, uh, take interest and also, um, take interest to the point where they're willing to donate the wrapping of the, um, of the lifeguard stations with, uh, commission approval. And they've sent to us several designs, uh, which they've, uh, which we can have on the screen, which are quite different than what the city had put out previously for residents to approve. And Lucas, both Lucas and Romero are residents of Sunny Isles. And they take pride, great pride in our city. And, um, this would be a great plus, I believe, for the city to have a Romero Brito, um, lifeguard station wrappings.
Okay. Anyone have any questions of Commissioner Joseph or comments?
I had some, um, I mean, before I had seen the, the designs. If we go in this direction, um, I was gonna just say that it should be beach theme or Sunny Isles theme. So I'm seeing some of that here. I don't, I don't know about the crocodile, but, but yeah, I mean, it's a conversation we can have. But we have, and, and also, so that's, and my other comment is this could probably contribute to like our arts in public spaces that, that we have. But then we also had the, um, the, um, the other ones were according to like our color palette. So I don't, I don't know if this would, does this fit with the code? Is this something that code permits? Because aren't we supposed to use our color palette?
We'd have to look at it, but I mean, you have to look at it, I guess, this is more of a donation of art. I don't know that your color palette deals with exterior walls for residences and for structures. So I don't know that it would necessarily apply. We'd have to check with Amy. I don't think it does, um, necessarily do that. We'd have to look at if it constitutes a mural. I mean, we'd have to look at the code to make sure obviously that it complies with it. That would be one of the things we'd have to do. And obviously, the specifics behind it with, I don't know if they're donating the design as well as the wrapping? Or is it the wrapping itself? Who's going to pay for the wrapping? Is the city responsible for the wrapping?
My other question was also the maintenance, right? If that's something we own.
Those are just details we have to work out, that's all.
Okay.
That's no different than when the city, uh, with the designs that the city presented. It would have been the same maintenance, the same.
No, I know, but it's different if we own it or we don't own it, or, I mean.
Well, it's donated, so I believe we would own it.
I, I would make that assumption, but I've learned not to make assumptions.
And I believe it would be quite a draw, advertising draw to the city.
Oh, I like the turtle.
To have Romero Brito's, uh, design on our lifeguard stations. That would be something that the city could advertise as well.
So it's for five, for five of them, because we have 10, we have five new ones, but we have 10 total. So this would be only for the new ones?
I'm sure we can have that discussion.
Okay. I mean, I'm, I'm.
Susan?
In my conversation with them, they provided all of these several options, thinking that we would select, you know, one or three, one, two, three. And then there would be slight variations or all the same. It would be up to us whether we wanted them all the same uniform throughout or if we wanted up to three different versions. And for clarification, he's, they're donating the artwork. The actual cost to wrap would be our expense, which we had already budgeted for anyways, based on us having the other graphic. Right.
But there wouldn't be a problem if it was damaged? Then we can replace it. Like, it would be, we would be able to do that. We, we don't have to go through them or anything, like.
We should not, no.
It would be ours to manage.
I'm sure we'd have to work out some type of, you know, art donation.
We'd have to do an art donation agreement because there's some licensing issues. So to your point, if something gets damaged and we fix it, you know, is it exactly the same? Is it not, we'd have to have some licensure to be able to maybe tweak the design for whatever reason if we have to fix it. You know, the little details like that.
So my, my question is, uh, why, and, and I understand Brito's a resident and, and he's a well-known, um, very well-known brand. But, um, what if we have other artists that also want to participate? That are city residents that do these, this sort of work? Have we considered that? Or have you considered that?
This was, um, we had the design that the city put forward. And I took it one step further in order to move the project forward. So I don't know if the city was looking to put it out for, um, open, uh, donations. I don't know. That wasn't spoken about. We, Susan, myself and my wife, Jody, we went down to the Brito Palace. We were invited. We, uh, had the discussion and we're at this point now. So I would like to move it forward to the evening session in order to be able to vote on it.
Commissioner Stuvinson?
Yeah, how were the three previous, um, arts selected?
Vanessa, can you show those? So our, um, staff graphic designer, came up with several options using our color, you know, our branding colors. Um, and then they were all so wonderful, we couldn't really choose. So we thought it would be great to engage the public and have a contest and let them all vote. And these are the three that were put to a vote. And we had, I think, over 390 responses for, um.
How, like, but that was through like social media or something?
Yes, through our Facebook page.
Okay, which I believe is not inclusive because the people that is not in Facebook will not even know ever that we were doing this. So we are trying to get the kids and the people out of the social media. If we, the only way for them to participate is through social media, then I think is the further purpose of being inclusive.
It may have been emailed as well.
You know, I think you. Right, it was in the email last, yeah, right. That is correct, yes. You're not on, your, your microphone's not on.
Yeah, it, it took you to another page where you could vote. I, let me see if there was an email that, um, that went out.
Yeah, but it was created, the designs internally, not with other like artists or whatever. That, that was my question. Yeah, okay.
Yes, it was internal design.
Just as we do for our publications, our signs, our, um, you know, our, our swag.
Yeah.
It's designed in-house.
Yeah, for me, it's, it's so personal, especially for people that go to the beach. I don't go to the beach, but, you know, for people that do and people that feel very strongly about the design or, or the, the blankness rather of, of the, the new towers. I would like to have the public get more involved in this process. Vice Mayor, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm still thinking about it. I mean, I kind of like the designs that, that our staff made.
Yeah, I like them too.
They're, they're, to be honest with you, I like, sometimes I like simplicity, you know, very clean design. Uh, I like Brito, but yeah, I, I, I kind of like them too. So I'm still kind of like divided about it, yeah.
That is the one that came in first place.
This one was my favorite because it's simple and bold and it, you know? Okay, I mean, I, I'm, I'm open to the conversation. I mean, do you want to, I know it's not perfect, but maybe we can, I don't know, like do a survey with the other ones in the mix. I don't know.
I, I like the designs of Brito, by the way. Yeah, I think, I think like, for the people that reach out to me about these, actually, the number one thing they said to me is that they like the previous towers and the color palette of the previous towers, the wood, et cetera, because they were emblematic of Sunny Isles, whatever. So if that's not the option, which is not, uh, then the second one would be Brito, um, designs.
And Commissioner, we heard the same thing, emblematic of Sunny Isles Beach.
The same people, yes.
And although we can't, I mean, the wood is not practical.
Doesn't hold up.
Efficient. So if we were transitioning away from that, we, we were looking for something that would replace emblematic. So we were looking for something emblematic of the city.
That's why I think that it, the, the public needs to be more involved if we do anything that, more than we did here. Because we asked for their opinion and then when we turn around and say, well, actually, no, we don't. We didn't really mean it. We didn't want your opinion. Uh, we, we decided we're, we, we know better. And that's my concern is that I would like to get the public more involved and, and for them to decide. But I also think we should open it to other artists, uh, if we're going to do that.
We could all go, like, and everybody just throw paint, like Jackson Pollock, and we just like.
No, I, I like your idea of having more cleaner lines.
Residents involved, yeah. No, no, I like, I like, I, I love Brito. Could, the advantage is that it's, it's Brito, you have the. No, no, I like, I like, I love Brito. The advantage is that it's, it's Brito, you have the name recognition, it's emblematic. We're looking for a piece of art that will kind of anchor us, and I think that could give us that recognition. But I'm divided, like, I, I kind of like the simplicity of the other designs that our staff came up with. So I, I think that merits further conversation.
So would the, would the, would, would you be willing to, to take this conversation?
The residents involved, I mean.
Yeah, take this conversation and come back with some, some recommendation for us.
We will find a way to get some feedback for you.
Okay, okay.
See, like this one, I would say no.
Yeah.
It doesn't say Sunny Isles.
I think that one says Brito.
That doesn't say, yeah.
That doesn't say Sunny Isles.
No, and also no.
It would be very helpful if maybe we could just go through the Brito ones very quickly and.
Yeah, yeah, let's see.
Get a little consensus while I have you all here. Can you start at the beginning?
Go back, hold on, hold on.
Okay.
This one is beach.
That's a yes for me.
And we have turtle nest, so it's nice.
No.
No.
Okay, wait, so go back to the less colorful, I'm sorry, Vanessa, can you go back a couple? So what was this one, yes or no?
It's, I, I like the colors, but is it, is it water? What is it? Is it, is it beach?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a no.
I would say no to that one.
No.
No.
This one, yes.
Yes.
This one, yes.
I like it, but it's not beach.
Elekka sun.
I really like, oh, sunshine.
That one's a maybe for me.
Yeah.
This one, yes.
Too busy.
I like it.
It's beachy.
Yeah, you're not gonna get a consensus, Susan.
I see that.
Yeah, 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 no, I think you are.
No, no. Well, no, but we all like the two, we could just repeat those two.
But there were some other ones that you showed, are those all of them? I thought I saw different ones earlier.
That one, yes. That one, yes.
I also don't want us to look like Miami Beach.
That's the challenge.
Right, so then it kind of looks like we're trying to look like.
To Sunny Isles Beach.
Yeah, that looks more like Miami Beach.
Do they have it in Miami Beach?
They have, their, their lifeguard stands are very colorful. I actually had some teens that said that to me. Why aren't our lifeguard stands look like Miami Beach? And I said, because we're Sunny Isles Beach. Yes, that was my daughter.
I never been in the beach in Miami Beach.
So, yeah, if you could come back to us, because maybe that there's a halfway point. Maybe it's using our color palette, maybe it's including the public, maybe it's opening it up to, to, to other artists.
Our color palette is kind of bland for this purpose.
Well, depends, so, okay.
Actually, that one that, that looked like water, but, you know, wasn't, those colors were actually appropriate.
Yeah, those are consistent.
It's just wasn't, it just wasn't beachy. It just, but the colors were right. So there may be, there may be, maybe prints, that one, you know? There may be prints that, that, there may be something.
And I'm sure once Romero sees what we had an interest in, he might be willing to do up a couple of others.
And also, if they're too busy, we may.
Yeah, we don't want to make him waste his time either, you know, so we need to be careful.
But I'm thinking maybe we, we just do the bottom, or we just do the top, you know?
This is the first time he's having our input, our overall input.
I think it's an interesting idea and, you know.
From here, he knows where to go.
But there was one that was really busy, and I was thinking like, if, maybe if we just did the top part or the bottom. So there's ways we can mitigate that, but it's a conversation worth having. I don't, I, I wouldn't move this to, to the evening meeting yet. But I think it's good for you for, for getting the, getting, getting it up here.
We will provide these in print to all of you, and you're welcome to provide your feedback.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item?
Next item is 3C, social media policy for city accounts.
Okay, so I'm gonna read a few comments. So the current interpretation and management of the city's official social media channels have created a pattern of communication that is misrepresenting the collective voice of the city commission. It undermines the principle of balanced representation and potentially expose the city to compliance risk, compliance risk. Specifically, the designation of the mayor as the sole spokesperson for official city social media posts is procedurally flawed and contrary to best practices for a commission governed municipality. So we have a few examples of issues. So in July 5, there was a post which is at the end of the memo, titled Message From The Mayor Larissa Bechen Offering Condolence For The Tragedy In Texas. However, in August 11th and 28th, it was a request to publish post honoring Senator Uribe's passing and also the students in Minneapolis. Those were, came from our commissioner, myself. And even though the staff made a post, they denied to use my name in the, in the post because they say that the spokesperson of the city for the social media accounts is the mayor, which however, that does not apply for the city of Sunny Isles Beach PD accounts. So this pattern demonstrates a clear practice of prioritizing the mayor's visibility while denying equal attribution to other commissioners, which is especially problematic now the mayor is in campaign. So best practices are now being ignored because there is not a procedure of what gets posted and who is attributed or how is, even if it's documented, how that process is being done. About what is it that gets posted and who makes that decision. So the city commission, not the mayor alone, is a governing body of the city of Sunny Isles Beach. So official city communications, especially those speaking on behalf of the city commission must reflect the collective consent or established policy of the whole body. We have had issues in the past where certain post has been needed to be deleted after we give input to the city manager. So to correct this issue, we should promote balanced representation and minimize legal risk. The commission must adopt a specific language clarifying the commission's role in social media communication and establish an equitable attribution process. So a few of the recommendations is that we have an institutional voice, you know? So all official city of Sunny Isles Beach social media accounts shall represent the institutional voice of the city and the city commission as a whole. Not specific unless, which is gonna be coming later, we should have a specific role clarification. So the mayor by virtue of the office is a primary ceremonial representative of the city, but it doesn't explicitly says that is the sole of exclusive social media spokesperson for the city, which is an administrative duty, and we have a non-administrative duty for city officials. Also, when an official communication, a statement or condolence or congratulatory message is published on city channels on behalf of the commission, each of by default be attributed to the city of Sunny Isles Beach commission, which is the governing body. What about individual attribution? If we are gonna do that and accept certain people to do posts and have the notoriety that they may come from this commissioner or the mayor, any commission, including the mayor, requesting the use of their individual name and title for a ceremonial or non-politics post, must submit the text for review to the city manager. There is a typo that is to the communication director. If approved, the post shall attribute the statement accurately and must be provided the same opportunity for attribution as the mayor or anybody else, ensuring equal access to the city platform for all elected members in good standing. So these are a few of the best practices, etc. So in order for nobody to monopolize the official communication platform, so the request will be for the consensus for the city managers to come back to us with some kind of social media policy for the social media accounts of the city. Now of us individually or the staff, because I know already the staff have their own policies in practice. So now you can make your comments.
Anyone have any questions?
I know, I, I actually, first of all, thank you for bringing this as a discussion item and not putting it as a resolution, because this way we can, you know, slow it down and, and read it and, okay. I, I agree with some of what you've said and disagree with some, some other things. The, I'll, I'll, I'll give you this. There have been posts that, that it says on behalf of the commission that don't reflect my feelings about it. And yet I'm, I'm thrown in there because it's on behalf of the commission. So I think, I think when we are posting something, it, it just needs to say like from the city, you know, the city of Sunny Isles Beach. And, and then that way, you're not speaking for me when you don't know how I feel about something. So anyway, that's, that's my, that would be my, my summary of the comments. Yeah.
Which it makes sense to the point that when something, like for example, in the past, it happened that we used to see the flyers of the events when they get published. That changed, well, I was one that I was very outspoken about it because I didn't, I don't like the surprise of getting informed of what's going on in the city because it get published or because somebody, or somebody sent it to me. So out of respect, we should get informed in advance, and now it's happening. So now the flyers, we receive them before they get published, which is a very good practice, you know? So with a social media post, I believe the same sentiment. If it's gonna come on behalf of us, or at least if, if I'm gonna get mentioned as in the name of the commissioners and one of them, I would like to be informed at least in advance to give me the opportunity to say I don't want to be part of it, unless we already voted for it, of course, you know? So I don't want to micromanage the social media. That is not the intent of this. And there are many municipalities which I didn't want to share because some of them are having issues with their own that they're creating, there are a few municipalities already in Florida that created a social media policy because of these issues. And also when we have elected officials that they are campaigning, then it is even, it gets worse. So right now, we just don't have a policy. Like I say, it's an administrative role to decide, designate a spokesperson. We actually have, I believe, in some kind of retain, even crisis management teams in case that something happens. So, so we don't have a spokesperson. So we cannot use that excuse to say, oh, somebody can post something and somebody else cannot. So we have to have some kind of consistency.
So I, I will tell you this, right, like I, you know, I always tell you that like your, your brain and my, my brain are wired opposite, right? So for me, rather than, well, if, if, if one can do it and the next one can do it, remember my hammer analogy? Like, I, I feel like you don't give everybody a hammer, you just take away the first hammer. And then we don't have to be micromanaging or whatever. I, because then what's gonna happen is when other people's, you know, whoever is campaigning, whoever, then we're, we're all gonna be like, we're gonna drive the media department crazy with, with our special announcements. Or I, I don't, I think, I think we shouldn't have that at all. Because, and I understand the, the mayor's position being the, the spokesperson. Obviously, if there's something tragic that happens or we're in the news, or you should be the person, right? And then if you can't do it, then the next person, etc. But especially with the, with the city's social media, I, I, I agree that it should just be from the city. And if we as individuals have a particular message we want to put out there, we do it on our own platforms, you know? That would be, I think that's, that's how I land on this. Yeah.
Mr. Joseph?
No comment.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, so speaking strictly about social media, social media post, I think in my view, there, there's two, two or three types of communication, right? There, there's the informative type of communication that I think should come, if it's the commission that wants to communicate something, it should state from, from the city of Sunny Isles Beach commission, right? If the post is political in nature, or it's got some tinges of, of, of being political, I think it should come from the city, just because the five of us, I think, have different political ideas, okay? So like Commissioner Vizcarra stated, that there's certain things that we as a city have posted in the name of the commission that she doesn't necessarily agree with, with that position. So I think we need to be very careful, you know, on the subject of the, of the post, the nature of it, whether it's information or whether it is some political aspect to it or not. So it should state from the commission, you know, if it's information that we are putting out there. Now, if not, it should state from the city. So that, obviously, just talking about post, social media post. Aside from that, when we are giving condolences because of somebody's death or a tragic event, I think it should come from the city commission and city staff, obviously. So we need to include the staff in there as well. And we should have very clear guidelines and separate the type of post that is gonna be put out there and who's gonna be putting that out there.
I agree with all of them.
Or attributing themselves to that, yeah.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
So we have a media department, and I'm not sure the mayor is comfortable using our media department because we had a concert in the park that was supposed to happen yesterday that didn't occur. But then, one day, I saw this company, Svet Florida, advertising for the mayor regarding this concert. So I was just thinking, is the city paying now this company, Svet Florida? Or how is that occurring that the mayor is using Svet Florida to advertise city events?
The, no, this is not a paid advertisement by the city.
So how is it occurring that, and what is the reasoning behind using Svet Florida to advertise city events?
What's the point of your question? I don't understand.
It's a city event, so why do we need an outside company advertising for it?
No one's advertising anything. These are personal messages from me.
Okay, so you're using the city. So what was it, a political advertisement?
What is your question, Commissioner?
I'm asking why an outside company is advertising a city event.
It's not, there's no outside company advertising a city event. This isn't a message that is directly from me, just like you can put a message out on social media, just like anyone could.
But you're using city logo, city information.
City information is open to everyone. What do you mean?
City logo?
The city logo was not used. So Commissioner Stuvinson, do you want to just finish your item? What exactly are you asking the, the manager to do?
Just to give us an update about the guidelines for our social media accounts of the city.
Perfect. Is that enough information? All right, next item?
Next item is 3D, discussion regarding turtle nesting program.
Yeah, so I.
Oh, wait a second, yeah, it's five o'clock. Do we want to just continue or move this to the 6:30 meeting?
It's very short what I have to say.
Short, all right, let's, let's continue.
It's gonna be very short, yeah.
Yes, you're, we, well, not, everyone okay with it?
I'm okay with going after four.
It's five, yes, but okay. Are we okay with going at this time? Commissioner, Vice Mayor, your microphone's not on.
Okay, so I'm going.
I am okay.
All right, go ahead.
So I had received a few, a lot of complaints about a few buildings in the beach that at night they are very bright. So I saw the people from the Sea Turtle Conservancy Lighting Program, Lighting Program, at the, one of the conferences, and I approached them. But online, this is just to give direction for our city attorney and our city clerk to be in conversation with them, to give us an update how we should be, if needed, to do any of. if needed, to do any update to our code of ordinance when it comes to the lighting ordinance for sea turtle protection. Um, I already received the language and I shared with you guys, right? I think you received it today, uh, yesterday, Mauricio. And Alan, I, you received my email too. Okay, okay, okay. So they sent me already the ordinance, uh, update. They gave us a very low score with our ordinance as it is right now. So again, this is just to give the direction for them to start the conversation to give us an update if necess, if necessary to our existing ordinance. Nothing more.
Any comments from the commission?
I think, I think it's a great idea. Um, and I would, uh, I mean, we get a lot of nests, you know, and, which is great to see. And by the way, I, I think, um, the, uh, green turtle just got moved off of the, um, endangered list, I think, this month. So it's been endangered for a long time. So and that's one of the, the fact that we have nests is one of my favorite things about Sunny House Beach, that we have nesting turtles. So I was gonna ask, because I understand the city manager doesn't have enough to do, um, can we include, when we have nests, can we include nesting information in your reports? I'd like to know how many nests we have, you know?
Yes.
When we have them, yeah. Um, what else? Yeah, and, and also, um, along these lines, I don't think we've ever, we've ever had like a hatchling release. Then I think that's something our residents would enjoy. I know we do it in Holover. Um, but something to think about. We have? We've done it?
Yes, through our camp, we have, the campers have been able to release-
Oh, that's nice. I didn't know that. That's nice. Okay, well, I strike that comment.
Invite us next time, please.
Invite us next time. Okay.
All right. So, Commissioner Joseph, do you have anything to add?
Is that the city logo? Is this the city logo?
It's sharing our flyer, yeah. Can we stand on, on-
Well, you mentioned something.
Yes, that's a sharing of the flyer, which anyone could share the flyer. Anyone could share the city flyer. Do you have anything to add on this item?
No, I'm going back to this side.
We've passed that item.
No, because you weren't on it.
Commissioner Joseph? Stick to the item. Anyone could put-
Going back to this item that you weren't on, it's on the commission.
This is not a true statement, okay? Any person can share. It's a city flyer. Anybody could share our flyers. In fact, we want people to share our flyers. The whole point is to get people to come to our events that are residence. So, um, as far as the turtle are concerned, I think that it's amazing that we have so many nests. Um, my concern would be the restrictions and what that means for us. Um, as far as what sort of, how that affects the buildings and then what it, and Sampson Park.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Here we have-
We are, we're currently-
Can you put that down, please?
Advertising bogey on the beach.
Yes, that's, you're embarrassing yourself. Can you put that down, please?
I don't believe I'm embarrassing myself.
You are. Go ahead.
We've been, I've spoken with our code manager. We have been in contact with, uh, turtle conservancy, conservancy. And we are working on drafting something.
Okay.
But to your point, we also wanna consider, we have to consider now when we pass an ordinance, the financial implication-
Right.
-which could impact our lighting, our street lighting as well. But we are looking at that. It's comprehensive.
All right, because I, I also wanna make sure that we're including the condos because many of them do have, um, I think Trump Tower, uh, has a restaurant on the beach. There's a few that have restaurants that are on the beach, so just wanna make sure that they're part of the conversation. And, um, yeah, I would love to know how many turtles are hatching though.
Yeah, in, in, in the ordinance that they sent me last night, which is like the gold standard for them, even, um, includes when there is a pier. So like, like we do, which is not that common in Florida, believe it or not. So, um, so it's very comprehensive, like you said, so that's it. Just to continue that conversation and bring something to us in the future to protect our turtles, yeah.
Okay, perfect. All right, uh, do we wanna keep going? Any objections? Okay, Commissioner, uh, Stuvinson, your item.
Yes, okay, so I, again, I receive from our residents almost every weekend and during the week as well, a lot of complaints about the chairs of the condominiums on the beach. They send me pictures, they send me everything. So I start asking here in the city to our staff, what is the, uh, the process? The permit process and the permit fee. And I was super surprised to find out that the pro, the fee to have the permit in the area of the beach to put the chairs is a hundred and fifty dollars a year. And it's been that, if I'm not mistaken for what I got, since the very beginning of the city. So once again, it's a hundred and fifty dollars what the condominiums pay for the exclusive use of the beach area. So I have my notes, so see here. We are allowing private entities to monopolize a public resource. Condos on their own also charge premium rates based on the exclusive use of this public space. It is considered, I did some research and I asked some actual experts about this, and they said that pre-seating is not a best practice anymore uh, because it creates a de facto private beach. Um, and I had even pictures that I received from our residents of like areas that they put like the cones, making, orange cones, making sure that the, the, the resident can even walk through the, through these areas, that they are public. So, uh, pre-seating creates a de facto private beach, which is poor coastal management and should be replaced, which is what is considered now best practice, that is set open request system. So you have to be there as a resident of the building and request, uh, chair to be set once you are there. Not just put all these chairs that you want and keep them there empty. So another thing is that we had to revisit and update the process and of course the permit fee because it's like less than twenty dollars a month to have, again, exclusive use of the beach. So the permit fee does not reflect the commercial value of the exclusivity being granted. And like, um, one developer said to me one day, it's true, we don't own the beach, but we sell it, when we sell the apartments. So this is, uh, also bringing it to a discussion because I think it needs an ordinance, uh, change, if I'm not, uh, wrong. Otherwise I will have bring it as a resolution, so. Because we cannot bring, uh, ordinance, I'm bringing this right now as a, as a discussion item. Oh, I'm sorry, and I do have a question to the staff that I didn't have to answer just yet. What about the storage boxes? Do we charge additionally for that? Does those boxes has to be in the property of the condominiums? Because as it is right now, they're even on top of the domes. So what is the requirement for the storage boxes, areas, chairs, et cetera? Um, who's being the one that is, um, checking that they are in the designated areas? Uh, I think this is a part of a larger, uh, conversation, but I, what I can tell you is that our residents are really upset about this. Um, and they don't feel, um, that the, that we are doing the best for them. That part of the things that I get from the residents, ah, I'm sure they give you guys so much money to allow the condominiums to do that. Because everything is always, we are, we getting money. And I assure them that, in my case, not the case, I don't receive anything from anybody. Uh, but, uh, he opens the door to that kind of accusations, yeah.
So, um, Susan, I had asked this question years ago, if you remember, uh, if we were able to raise the price of that permit. And I was told at that time that it cannot be more than the cost of maintaining or issuing the permit. Is that something that's changed or?
That's correct. So there are two types of fees that you, this is a regulatory fee. That's why it's a hundred and fifty dollars because it's what, it's the administrative cost for processing the permit. It's not your property, it's not your beach. So unlike other fees that you could charge, so for example, um, if you did own the beach, you could charge more, a lot more for the exclusive use of that particular property because it's for the privilege of being able to use public property for your particular event or whatever it may be. But since it's not your property, it's not your beach, it's the county's. Um, and actually up to the mean water line, it's, it's actually the states. Um, you charge a regulatory fee, which is basically only for processing the permit. That's why it's so low.
Right, that's what I, so to, to Commissioner Stuvinson's point, how if at all can we change, change it so that, uh, at the very least, we can manage or mitigate some of this because this has been an ongoing conversation for as long as I can remember?
Well, that's, it, that opens up a much bigger box. Um, because again, the regulation of your beach, to what extent can you do that? I don't know what type of agreements we may have with the county with regards to how far we can go. So it kind of opens up Pandora's box a bit that we'd have to look into with the county. Because again, it's not your property, so to the extent that you're licensing a property that's not yours, there may be an issue there. We'd have to look into all that.
I remember also at that time I was told that anyone could get this permit. So that a sole person could go and put their chair out if they get the permit. But that, the only thing that prevents people from doing that is, for instance, you have to have a certain amount of insurance.
Well, I, I'd have to go back and look at the specific provision, but part of the issue too is that, yes, it does open it up to the west side also, not just those that are on the east side, correct? But then you're running out of real estate. So when somebody comes in for a permit, it lasts for a year. So if you have a property that's on the beach that comes in for a permit for a certain area, they have that area for that year. So at some point, you're gonna run out of the real estate.
So for instance, with, uh, I, I remember years ago, I don't know now, uh, on the west side, Zantropay used to have chairs out and in, next to Newport. So was that a separate permit or did they?
They have, they have to have permits in order to place chairs on the beach. But there becomes an issue, I know there was an issue in one instance where there were safety issues. The manager has some discretion with regards to the permit because if people are crossing Collins with a hundred chairs, then it becomes a safety issue and there, there's some discretion there. Again, I don't have the, the, the ordinance in front of me, but it would have to be, you know, if you're gonna make changes, there's gonna have to be a comprehensive look at how you manage the chairs on the beach.
I think it's overdue. I mean, we have to do it for the people. Like I said, I didn't get the answer about the storage. There is, there is big storage areas, uh, who regulate that? Because we're giving them the permit for a seat, for the place where they're gonna put the chairs. Are we allowing without, uh, uh, charging anything for them just to keep all hundreds of chairs in there? Also, um, this is not inclusive at all, you know? And the other, so I wanna know about the storage, how we manage that. And the second thing is that, um, do we have to give these permits to whoever comes? Or we are doing it because they come to us and they ask? Because we can eliminate, uh, uh, eliminate it completely, correct?
You, you can eliminate, well, yes, you can eliminate, of course, you can eliminate it completely. Um, currently, my understanding is it's first come, first served. Um, but if somebody renews within the allotted time, then in that space is taken, that space is taken. So again, I'd have to go back and look at the ordinance, but it's, it's, right now, it's first come, first served.
Okay, again, but it's not a right. It's just a privilege that somebody, whoever applies and is the first one in the line, is gonna get it. So we can limit the space that we're giving. Uh, right now, we are giving to the, these buildings so much space, they are abusing it. Uh, it brings also pollution, uh, when there is the turtle nesting, uh, times. Um, it is also like a challenge. So we even might consider just eliminating the program altogether.
Yeah, I just want, for clarification, this is about preset. Anyone could put chairs out at any time. So this is, so they would still be able to do this, they just couldn't preset the chairs, correct?
Mayor?
They're presetting basically to encroach. I mean, there's been such an encroachment that no one else coming to the beach can place a chair. And I've heard this for years.
I had a picture.
And I was told that code enforcement had some, um, means of enforcing this, but is that not the case?
All right, go, go ahead, Mr. Stuvinson.
Can I ask, uh, our code manager to come up and just give us an overview and then I can add some comments?
Yes, please, thank you.
Good afternoon, every-
How are you?
Better now. Good afternoon, everyone.
Hi.
Mayor, Commission. Uh, so this program, as you mentioned, has been around, uh, for quite some time. Um, but it, it does take into account, uh, it, it tries to provide the, the buildings with some leeway of allowing chairs and presetting for the residents. But at the same time, uh, making sure that the rights aren't being taken away from other residents that don't necessarily live on the beach. So when an individual building requests this, typically it's only the area adjacent to that building that's being allowed to preset. And as you've mentioned before, it really is only to preset. Some of the buildings take advantage of the area that's allotted to them to preset and some of them don't. And others will just bring out chairs. Um, actually, most of them bring out chairs as needed because for their staff to preset everything, it's not, it, it, it's not good for anyone.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the areas that are designated per code, we allow a twenty-foot buffer on the property line of every single property that's out there and not even just the folio, any building. So example, if it's Sociani one, two, and three, and it's all one folio, even in between each building, there's a total of forty feet between the buildings where it's solely for the public that doesn't live there. In addition to that, we also exclude the emergency access lane. No one's allowed to put any chairs on the emergency access lane, even the public. And then we also do not allow any beach presetting or any chairs placed anywhere within the line of sight where it might obstruct the lifeguards from, you know, viewing everything that they have to view. Our code also does not preclude any beachgoer from setting their chair wherever they want. These areas are not exclusive to the building. So they can preset and they're allowed to preset there. But any individual, I mean, I wouldn't want to, but any individual could sit down and put your personal chair in between or next to any of these other chairs that are out there. Uh, whether you want to or not, obviously, that's a personal choice.
Okay, may I?
Go ahead.
So, um, two things. In order to be more transparent, uh, I don't want to be the one to do a public record request or to ask my residents to do a public record request to know what you just said or to see the maps of those presettings. So I would like to propose also to, for that information to be available to the public. We have a beach chair program setting or something in our website, I was looking at it today, where there is those applications. So if we could please also put there who has a permit right now? What is the map? So people can know and see it and put big yellow and red that regardless of that presetting, anyone can put their chairs other than what you said, in the line of visibility, in the line of the, um, lifeguards where they have to go. I happen to actually go a lot to the beach with my kids. Uh, and, uh, even though what you said in book is real and is true, I've been several times in the beach, uh, in the shore with my son and I cannot see the lifeguard because of the umbrellas. So, and I'm not gonna say exactly where, because I don't wanna call out anybody. That's not the case right now, that's not the idea. But like I said, I cannot see them because, you know, uh, the shore is in that part sometimes because, you know, the ocean, you name it, uh, it gets shorter certain times of the year. So I don't have the visibility. So if I cannot see them, they cannot see me. If they cannot see me, they cannot see any of us. So this information, what you just said, should be available to the people and they should know because that presetting is creating that, um, people don't feel comfortable doing, they don't even know that they can do it and they don't feel comfortable getting in through all those chairs. And, and, and I can invite you to use our drones of the police or something at some point in the morning. The presetting actually is very real and is very big, especially by certain- condominiums, not all of them, and you are absolutely right, but some of them, you go there at nine in the morning and there's a full lines of chairs already. And right now, the season is coming, when the snowbirds are coming, you know, all the people from the north. So these condominiums are going to have more residents in there. So we need to do something because I think, I hope everybody else also receives some of those phone calls and pictures, and the people is just very annoyed about this.
So can we just put out on our website the maps that are there? And so people understand the process and that they, I think that, you know, this comes up every couple of months, I feel like it, and it's important for people to have that information.
Yeah, if they can bring a map to the beach with them and show the condo, whatever, or the phone, whatever.
I'm not suggesting we have vigilantes come out there, but I think it's.
No, to stand up for their rights.
Yeah, and I think to Commissioner Stewson's point, perhaps if we could have a little bit more enforcement, and that would also probably help with some of the dogs that run around on the beach as well, you know, some of those things, just to make sure that the standard of living is the same for everybody that wants to enjoy the beach.
We're hearing that are just, there are more and more dogs on the beach.
And I know we have time, because this goes with the fiscal year, these permits. So really, I want us to consider in our discussion to do the set open request instead of presetting. Like I said, I talked to experts about this. They told me presetting is not a thing no more. That was back in the day. Now it's set open request. So when you are there, or maybe you call your condominium, whatever, like whatever they're going to work it, you let them know that you need the chair and that's when they put the chair. So presetting for all of the above, erosion, turtles, you name it, residents, is not the gold standard anymore. So we can consider changing instead of presetting to setting up open request.
Yeah, but they don't need a permit for that. They can do that at any time.
No, 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 to the condominiums, to change it from.
No, I understand, but they don't need a permit for that. They don't need our permission. If we, that would just mean that we would then no longer allow presetting.
I'd like to add something. So I'd like to add something. So I understand that they, they meaning the buildings have an assigned perimeter, right? Where they could preset their chairs?
Just for the preset.
No, I understand that. But my, two things when talking about this. One is that they go above and beyond their preset.
Correct.
Lately, it's been better. Sometimes they kind of go overboard, they put the cones, as you mentioned. But the one thing I've observed is that they might have a hundred chairs there preset or less, whatever it is. But they might only have 10 people. So I think that perimeter should shrink. We should shrink that perimeter because it is too much. They're taking a lot of space away, and it also makes the experience, you know, of going to the beach. I mean, we still, as residents that don't live in those buildings, have a lot of space. But you know, sometimes you want to go further away from where a lot of the people are kind of congregating, you know? I like to go by where those buildings are because there's less people, et cetera. So I think we should revisit the measurements, the perimeter that we're giving them. Because if you go there at different times of the day, and I've gone there in the afternoon, I've gone there mid-morning, early morning, et cetera, those chairs are empty. I mean, you might have 10 people from those buildings there. So what they're taking, as far as sand is concerned, beach, is more than what they need. So that perimeter should be smaller, in my opinion.
We can eliminate the presetting altogether, and they can just call the beach people.
No, but they're still going to need some sort of perimeter. What I'm trying to say is that it could be a combination. It's, okay.
Yeah, but I just, I want to remind you that.
On demand, here.
They, anybody could put their chairs anywhere, meaning that if they don't have to pull a permit to get the presetting, they can put them anywhere. We can't prescribe a perimeter, is my point. Our perimeter, no, our perimeter is prescribed only for the presetting, but they can put their chairs anywhere. So if you say, for instance, you know, I live in apartment, whatever, 500 floor, whatever, and I'm coming down to the beach, I want my chair to be, you know, 50 feet away from everyone else, they can do that. You see what I'm saying?
The thing is to stop the approach.
How about this? I think that this is, I think if you can give us a report on this.
Okay.
So that we all have an understanding of the rules, but also so the public has it. And then to Commissioner Stewson's point, we can all kind of revisit it to see if there is a change that needs to be made.
We're trying to limit the encroachment.
Yeah, we can do that.
On the open space.
Yep.
Thank you, Julio.
You're welcome.
There's one more item, Commissioner Joseph.
Okay, thank you. So, yes, so we have injection wells that the city is planning. There was supposed to be a peer review, but I understand that's been canceled as to the feasibility of those wells. Is that correct?
Go ahead, Susan. Um, yes.
The peer review has been canceled?
You and I talked about a peer review. You said you did not want us to expend any funds on that. So we did an internal review from our city engineer, who concurred that the injection wells are a solution for our problem.
Okay, I don't believe that's their solution, but please let me know, how much is that intended cost for those? How many injection wells are there?
The current design has 10.
10 inject.
We don't know the cost because it hasn't gone out to bid yet, we're still waiting for our final permits.
So the cost includes the injection, the pumps themselves? Or is that only for the well drilling or what?
No, that's the total cost. And we're using existing wells, so it is modifying them.
So we have 10 existing wells?
Yes.
Okay. Do we know what the capacity of those wells are? How many cubic feet?
I don't have that information.
Okay, could you please get that to me?
Yes.
Okay. And also the cost of the pumps?
Do not know that yet, because it hasn't gone out to bid yet.
Okay, so how can we move forward on something?
Wait, wait, hold on, I'd like the city manager to chime in here.
We're moving forward with the injection wells because that was approved by the commission, and we're currently taking that out to bid. And that's not going to change unless the commission directs us otherwise.
But the commission approved it without knowing the cost?
In concept, we, what we did was we rejected the pump stations. If you remember, it was millions and millions of dollars, and came up with an alternative, which is the injection wells. So right now, we're costing that out and we're going to bring that back to you.
So these injection wells and these pumps, they have no filters, correct? So you're pumping polluted water into the ground through these wells? Is that correct?
I don't know the specifics of it.
Well, we need to know because that's an environmental issue. So how can you move forward on something without knowing the environmental effects?
Everything that we do requires permitting and approval. So we wouldn't do anything that's going to have an environmental impact without having a permit. Why would we do that?
And, and, okay, so once we know the cubic footage of these 10 wells, then I believe that if we were to go with pervious asphalt, that would be a thousand times more absorption area than what we would have in these 10 injection wells.
Based on what?
And that's something.
Why do you believe that? Based on what?
The square area of the absorption area of our flood zone.
The question is, Commissioner Joseph, can you clarify what you just said? You said it would be a thousand times better?
Well, no. I'm presuming that, I understand these wells are 100 feet deep. So in order to understand how much water those wells can accept, I need to know the circumference of the wells themselves in order to calculate how much water each well can accept. And then to determine by our absorption area, if we were to use pervious asphalt, which I believe it would filter out the impurities before getting into our aquifer, where these injection wells would not, we'd be pumping polluted water into our aquifer.
And I think the city manager's question was, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Manager, you're asking, what's the source of that information?
Well, I'm asking the city manager to have an open mind and to look into using pervious asphalt and pervious concrete on our sidewalks. And that would probably preclude us from having to use these injection wells at a much lower cost. I believe, and I've spoken to one company, that the pervious asphalt would cost a million dollars a mile to install, which is a lot less than these injection wells, I believe, which we don't even have a number. So to say that the commission approved it not knowing a number, that's how we get ourselves into all these.
Jerry, we, it was in the budget, but they don't have a specific number, that's why it's going out to bid.
So how much is it in the budget?
It's going to, it's going to be coming back to you. You approved the concept, but nothing's going to occur until it comes back to you for approval.
Okay, all right. So once that comes back to us, we can have further conversation.
But at the same time, I would like to have the city manager look into, be open-minded and look into the pervious asphalt and concrete as well. Engage from professionals as to the benefit of each.
If it's a noble material, yeah, why not, just to consider it, you know?
Because I believe then the injection wells would not be necessary.
I'd like to hear from an engineer.
Thank you.
Yes.
We base our work based on our engineering experts. I mean, there's, I don't have anything else to say about that.
Several states use pervious concrete and pervious asphalt, and they've had quite a lot of success. And I believe Sunny Isles could be the first city in Florida to use those items and be quite successful.
If Dade County provides product control approval and they would approve of it, then we would consider it. But until that time, and South Florida is entirely unique.
So I'm asking that you have an open mind and you start the process to get county approval for us to look into pervious asphalt and pervious concrete.
I don't think that there's support from the commission to do that. There's not support from the commission to do that.
Is there not support from the commission to solve the flooding problem in Sunny Isles in a more cost-efficient manner?
We would need to hear from an engineer.
I would like to learn more if it's a noble material that can be better than what we.
Several states use it currently.
Let me finish, if it's a better material, and it might even be more expensive, but overall, and with time, it's going to prove that it's better. If that is the case, I would love to have somebody to come and give us like a presentation or send us some information that we can read. I'm okay with getting like new materials that they are more, that are better.
We know that these pumps are expensive. And they require a lot of maintenance.
Right, but I don't support us tearing up our sidewalks at a million dollars a.
But you're not, you're not familiar with this?
I'm not, because I'm not an engineer, so.
Okay, well, I'm asking you to have an open mind.
No, I understand that, but I just.
In order to solve our flooding problem.
I think that we all have an open mind, but I think it needs to come from an expert.
Okay, well, then let's, that's what I'm asking, to have an open mind and to look into these products for Sunny Isles.
I'm okay with looking into the product.
What is that issue?
I'd like to hear from an engineer, maybe ask an engineer, can we use pervious concrete? And he might say yes, no, it doesn't work, like Rick said before, when you were talking about it.
We did, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, we did.
We did, okay. Yeah, that's all I wanted to know. So the engineer said yes or no?
We did what?
The engineer said no, that it was not a solution.
No, it was a solution.
Which engineer was this?
Our city engineer.
Who was that? Rick?
Do you have, yes, do you have anything further?
All right, so listen, Jerry.
I would like to have a company that specializes in pervious asphalt and pervious concrete to give us.
A presentation.
Yes.
I'm not interested in a presentation.
I'm not interested in a presentation.
But if there is, that's a conversation that needs to be had with staff, with the engineer. I'm not, you're right, I divorce people, right? I am not a, this, I'm not the person, I wouldn't be very helpful in listening to that presentation.
Well, you could go on to Google also and look into something and.
My point is, okay, I'm not going to support doing it this way, but if, you know, if it needs to be revisited, staff can do that.
There are several states that use these materials and they're quite successful with them.
I would like to.
At a lower cost than maintenance.
All right, I think that, we're done. All right, so, meeting adjourned, and we'll see everyone at 6:20.